Though there's no sound on the video zoom.
Yeah.
EB, I think you're asking about the needing to go back in front of the planning board for site plan review?
Right for, well, the code had said that you needed planning approval for that type of lighting. And so I thought as part of that extension of to appear before them that that would be looked at at that time.
This is downtown.
Downtown, excuse me.
Right, so I think. First variance is that.
I don't think your mic's on.
Okay, so the electronic message centers are not permitted in the downtown district. So I mean, the first variance is whether to allow them or not. They're seeking a variance from the code, the code bars.
Right, but there was a reference to planning approval as well.
That they previously gotten planning board approval and then we need these variances, but they need to go back for an extension to their private approval. So it's just time has elapsed. So that's the only reason they need to go back.
So there are two provisions here. One is whether the electronic message centers, whether or not you'll grant a variance to allow them. And second, whether you'll allow more than one per lot.
Sorry, just to not to interrupt, but the the extension shouldn't apply since the building permit has already been applied for as of March of last year. And has been reviewed.
Oh, so there's no on the, so it's basically just this is an erroneous no on our, on the, on the staff report. I think that's what you're referring to. Is that no?
Yes.
Okay, ignore said no, is basically what I'm getting at this point.
But you're still on the agenda for planning.
Yeah, just because of the these variances.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions related to the two EMCs or the lighting itself?
I, I think.
Well, it's really just the two AMC, this, this variance in particular, this area variance is the whole, the code for the citywide is only one EMC per property. And so this would be granting this variance would allow them to have both on either side of the doors.
Right, but first you have to allow them to have an EMC.
Yeah, we're just working backwards up our list.
Okay.
I'm just clarifying each, that's all. But yes, yes, the key one would be the first one.
Wasn't there a discussion about limited hours of when it would be on? Not just intensity of lighting, I think, may after a certain hour. Is that something that has been considered further?
I'm sure that would be considered.
Oh, sorry, if you can, if you're addressing us, can you speak into the microphone just so we're catching it on the recording?
I can't speak for Philip, but I would think that just like we do in Schenectady, it's not on all night long, those digital displays. Imagine the lights on the Proctors or the American Theater backlit light would be on 24/7.
That's the bulbs.
Right, that's the bulbs.
Yeah, do you have the ability to dim those bulbs if there are complaints from neighbors, things like that? Do you have that flexibility over those bulbs? Is that, I think that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, they're low level LED light, so I, we could check the spec on that, but I don't imagine they're super, super bright. I don't believe they have dimming capacity on them.
Okay. I think that's why like the hours were, you know, was an option instead.
Thing that dimming was specifically about the EMCs on both sides is what it was. We were talking about being able to dim that. Cameron, did you have another question?
Well, I guess mine was directly once, once we allow the one and then the two, I know it opens up a can of worms for everybody else. Is there? Cause I mean, I'm pro this project. Is there a way to word it? Cause this is not like pixelated stuff. This is like a television screen. And, and it's, it's not like I have to be down the road to read it like when I'm standing in front of it. And is there a way to word it in such a way that you cover our base and you're going to say, no, I can tell by the look on your face.
You can word your resolution any way you want. Okay, but you're, if you're allowing an electronic message center in the district where it's prohibited, you have opened up the, okay.
Yeah, and to that point, that's why we talked about last time that we as a board, you know, especially, especially if we grant this variance, we would be making the, you know, I think it's under the historical context and would apply to this theater and really the only other one downtown. Where this kind of lighting and EMCs is historic, you know, part of the historical use that we make the recommendation to city council to amend the zoning code to apply to just that kind of historical type use and kind of close.
The electronic message center is not a historical use, right?
Well, it's not just the EMCs, it's the illumination too. Cause they're in front of us for you, for the use variance of the EMCs as well as illuminations.
You mean for the, for the theater sign itself?
Yeah.
The American Theater?
Yeah.
That's historic.
Yeah, I mean, the EMC use, yeah, it could be, it's just.
I mean, those are, those are new, that's new technology. I mean, where it used to be printed posters, I guess.
Yes.
Maybe with some back, some illumination in the boxes. I don't remember.
Yeah, they were, they were in cases.
Sorry, microphone.
They, they were posters, you know, movie posters in the old days. And I believe they were lit on the sides inside that aluminum case that had glass on the front of it.
Yep, but they were illuminated. Just clarifying, those boxes were illuminated in some way. Historically, okay. Closes my loophole. All right, EB.
Just to clarify from my own mind, is it feasible to have like a parallel clarification, one in the resolution indicating that if, if the variance or variances are approved, that they're approved based on the specific facts of this situation and the historic nature, and then connect it to the recommendation to the council with regards to clarifying the code for future purposes.
Yes, we can do all that. And yes, that is the best approach to grant this without setting a blanket precedence. This one, you know, this, go back and we haven't even gotten to the first one, the use variance. The only thing from, you know, this applying or other, you know, developments within downtown, being able to justify the use variance is a higher threshold than an area variance. So the fact that it is a use variance, it's, it's challenging to meet that. You know, the second two is, you know, area variance lower threshold, but if we were to grant the use variance, that's a higher bar for this project as well as any other project to meet.
So I mean, the board is aware, I hope, that there are other venues that are seeking approval for, or will be seeking approval from the board for electronic message centers downtown. And they're also entertainment venues.
Are they also historic?
Are they historic structures? Yes. I don't know that they, I don't know what. I mean, I know that this theater, I mean, judging by the historic photographs, had two windows on each side of the entrance, which were held posters and were illuminated. I don't know if that applies to the other venue or not. But they will be seeking a similar, similar relief.
Well, then the clarification in the code would hopefully help for the guide those other situations.
That would be if the council max it.
Right.
Yes. All we can do is make the recommendation.
I just, I mean, I'm not speaking for or against the variance. I'm just want you to realize it's full import.
Okay. Camera.
Is there any other way to illuminate? Is there any other way to illuminate what it is that's showing other than the television screens? That's financially feasible.
You go back to movie posters. I don't think they exist anymore, but.
I mean, I think it's.
This is the way we've done on all the facilities at Proctor Zones.
Which would include downtown locations like Schenectady, Albany.
Saratoga.
Saratoga.
We have a variance in Saratoga for the sign there. Digital sign there.
So like, what about like when you go to like Colony Center or Cross Gates and you're going up the escalator?
Right, I'm sorry. Pull it down.
Yeah, you should.
There we go.
So when you're inside, like going to Cross Gates or Colony Center, you know, they do have big posters and what, I mean, I love what you're doing. So I'm just trying to be devil's advocate and throw out other possibilities that don't open up cans of worms for us down the road. So is there any way to use those? And I mean, they'd make them bigger. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just asking you guys, you, you guys are the.
Well, would historic even allow us to make those bigger? I mean.
Well, that's a whole nother thing, right?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, cause those are big.
Yeah, we're.
They're ginormous, actually.
Yeah, we are bound by shippo on a lot of things.
Right. Okay. Well, then that answers that question. Okay. Yeah.
Is this an accepted replacement by shippo or a preferred replacement by shippo or somewhere in between?
It's, it's accepted and it's in their, all their documentation.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess we're back on to our last most challenging, working our way up the list, the use variance. Any presentation related to that as far as like being able to meet all the criteria for a, a use variance?
I mean, this is for the EMCs, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, to allow the use of EMCs within the downtown district.
I mean, just to reiterate what we've been speaking about, it is standard operating procedure for Proctors to use EMCs to advertise movies that are happening at their theater. This is the only single screen theater, I believe, within five mile radius or so. More than that. So, you know, it is important to the downtown in terms of the commercial draw it will bring. And, you know, it's, it's something that's going to revitalize that street scape. It's certainly much better than what's happening right now. So you know, the, the electronic component can be controlled to whatever conditions, you know, would be amenable to making sure it's not disturbing neighbors, things like that. You know, it doesn't need to be so brightly lit, but it is standard for almost every single theater to be using this rather than going back to movie posters, which may not even be printing.
So just to clarify, I mean, the use variance is, is any illumination within downtown? So it would apply both to the EMCs as well as the, the American sign above.
Right.
So we're all on the same page there. And, you know, the biggest challenge with the, the use variance is, you know, being able to justify these criteria. So, you know, if this variance weren't granted from a financial and hardship perspective, how would this impact the project?
Sure, I'll answer that one. Say that again.
From a financial perspective, it was mentioned at the last meeting that there's, there's funding from shippo tied to shippo approval. You know, basically if, if this variance isn't granted, does not having this illumination, that sign.
What will happen to the ship?
Yeah, what happens to your funding?
The channel sign?
Yeah.
With the bulbs. Yeah. I mean, the, it is something that they are requiring and there is money tied up to the construction budget based on the shippo approvals. And that is part of the historic, you know, historic lettering that they would have done. And we're, you know, we're recreating that.
And it could very possibly have an impact on the, on the tax credits of people that, you know, are helping to finance the project. The entities who are looking to buy tax credits from us, you know, they, this is what they're investing in.
I mean, it is pretty standard for shippo to require signage to remain, especially if it's on the main facade of a building. Lombardo's in downtown Albany is a good example of that. We had to redo the neon signage for that. I mean, we renamed it to Hattie's, but it was.
Is that what makes the hardship unique to the property?
Yeah, I would say so.
Any other questions at this time? If not, I'll open that up to public comments. So if you guys want to step back. Are there any comments from folks within the room? Step up, name, general address is fine and comment.
Hi, my name is Russ Brooks, live at 37 First Street. Did you receive my comments? Did you all get them? So, okay. Couple of things I think I can help out on some of the questions, things you're trying to answer. But first I would like to ask why signage issues are being heard by zoning when the Troy Code specifically says they are issues for planning? And I understand that they got. And I understand that they got planning site, site plan approval back in May of twenty twenty-three. But this was an issue that was not addressed and was overlooked. Things were kind of in turmoil at that point. A month before the new code was put in place, people really weren't up to speed. And then shortly after, two months after, there was pressure on that planning commission. It disappeared. We ended up with a planning board. These are signage issues. The marquee is an area issue. I think the sixteen foot above the sidewalk is a ridiculous thing, and I think that should be recommended that it, the code be amended to put that down to, you know, a reasonable height. Sixteen feet offers no protection and is not even, you know, they don't even have to be that high, I think, in Manhattan. The American sign at the top is a historic sign. It was always there. It's a sign issue. It's not a zoning issue. The EMCs are also a sign issue, and it says specifically in the code, electronic message centers must be approved by the planning commission prior to the director of code enforcement issuing a permit. It's not a zoning, it's not a use or an area issue. It's part of plant, planning's responsibility. And I know the agenda said that asking for two when one is permitted, that rich said none are permitted in, in the downtown multi-use district. And that's kind of why Troy is very different from Schenectady and Saratoga and Albany. We have a, a mixed use downtown and a lot of people live downtown. And so that's why the EMCs are not permitted. It's a different animal to the comments about other performance venues looking for EMCs. The music hall came to the planning with seventeen EMCs in their site plan application. It didn't even check the box that they were asking for signage. And it was like, and they, they were saying they were three and they were actually seventeen. So, if you're going to start permitting EMCs in the downtown, there's going to have to be a lot of additional uh, enhancements to the code. Let me read a couple of parts of the code here about EMCs. And that message duration, the message or copy on an EMC may not move or change more than once in a twenty-four hour period. Alright, that's not the intent of the signs. These signs are to be on a reasonable rate changing so people can see what upcoming shows are. Alright, so you would have to change that too. So it's not like just a use variance. This is why it's a planning issue. The dimming, they have to have photocells and dim. That's easy enough to do. Colors, an EMC can only have two colors at a time. We're talking about TVs. They're gonna have all sorts of colors. And there's a maximum, there's foot candles and stuff that are permitted on the brightness. I think that this is not an issue to be decided by zoning, and I think that I'm, I'm very much in favor of the project. I think the EMCs could be useful, you know, like in place of window side lights. But how do you determine who gets them and who doesn't? You know, like, this is the big problem, and this is the can of worms you open. The music hall, I mean, they wanted seventeen. They had a four-sided one above the parking lot. They had two kiosks in their little outdoor space that were four-sided. They had three on the marquee that were big and they had two side lights. This, the American theater isn't, is a entertainment venue. The music hall is a music hall, and if you look at music halls all around the world, they don't have digital signs like that. I mean, famous ones are very historic. None of that stuff's permitted. What you do see are the, which is very common in Europe, and you see them all in New York City, are the signs behind glass that have a, a screen that'll roll every so often and have a different poster come on, and you can take posters and put them on this belt. That's a common thing. Sometimes people just put up, like at PS twenty-one down near Kinder, Chatham area, they just have one poster that lists all the shows that, for the year. I think there's, I think it's a lot that needs to be addressed if we're gonna go down the road of permitting EMCs in the downtown. Okay, so my recommendation is that this, go back to planning where Recode Troy says it should be decided. And if there, if EMCs are going to be allowed, that we figure out how to permit the type of EMCs that proctors would like for the American, where you can change it, but cha- had, allow something more than once every twenty-four hours and allow more than two colors. I think there's a lot that needs to be worked on here. This isn't just an easy. Yes, you can have your EMCs. That's my comment.
Thanks, Russ. Uh, any other comments from members of the audience here tonight regarding this project? No? Okay. Anyone online that wishes to make a comment to the board regarding this project? You can just unmute yourself or send something in the chat. That chat is in the comment regarding this project, right?
I think it does. No, it does. Just letting me know that it was muted.
Oh, we muted ourselves? Not ideal, but alright, we gotta fix.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. No other comments?
No.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Either of the applicant or based on comments? Um, so clarifying Evie's earlier question, this applicant has already been through planning, doesn't need to go back to planning?
He, they are going back to planning. They are on the agenda for March.
They are on the agenda for March? Because they need.
Yes, yes.
Okay. You are on the agenda for March. Okay, so basically you're.
They're not for the extension.
For site plan approval?
Right.
Okay. Alright. Um, so put, I feel comfortable, the planning board will have the opportunity to discuss and comment on some of the nuances regarding EMCs and lighting that we don't necessarily get into or should be getting into when it comes to uh, a yes, no on a variance. Um, I guess I would recommend that the city look into that, um, what Russ brought up as far as the twenty-four hour message changeover, cuz that would be, you know, if it, that's in the code.
Um, yes, and I was thinking that that is up to planning to regulate, make sure, because there are other things aside that. Colors of EMCs messages uh, shall not be more than two colors and all those things. We're thinking of planning to address all those things.
Yeah.
Once they're going back to planning. That's why did he include that as like variance, like.
Yeah, those are like the nuanced details. If we, you know, decide to say, yes, it's allowed for um, this building. Okay, um, yes.
So the reason that the use variance is before you is because it, that is an absolute prohibition. And so it, the planning board doesn't, I, in my view, doesn't have the power to vary that. Whereas the twenty-four hour and two-color business, I think, is more in the nature of planning. But I, I, I mean, I agree that the, the code is not uh, completely artfully drafted.
That was well put, Rick. Well put, um.
Well, I just wanna make a comment that quite often, um, technology uh, goes faster than the law. Has to catch up.
Yes. Um, I do, I do think that these, the variances that we have in front of us are appropriate for our board, given the code, but that planning will look at those other nuances related, um, assuming that these are granted. Um, any discussion regarding concerns, questions among us board? As far as these variances are concerned? Um. Uh, I, I'm gonna reiterate, did I make a motion last time of like, yes, please, let's make the recommendation to city council to address this? Do we need to make that motion? Or can I just reiterate the recommendation that we have city council?
I think you already uh, agreed on making the recommendation. But I think you were going to draft it.
I was gonna work with Angie to draft it, alright? We're working on it.
Okay.
I did not, no, I volunteered for one thing only by myself before. I will not do that again.
Okay, no, there wasn't a motion to, that was made and.
But we all agreed verbally. So, okay, we don't need to make a formal motion to do that or anything. We can just make the recommendation.
Well, I, you act by resolution, so maybe you should.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, Russ, come on back up. Yeah, we haven't had much public comment, so I'll, I'll allow it.
The issue of setting precedent of permitting this downtown when they're not permitting, permitted at all. If you're going to make recommendation, make a resolution, you were discussing a little while ago about how do you roll that precedent setting into maybe only this type of the performance space?
Can you lift the microphone up?
Yeah, how, how are we, how do you end up dealing with setting precedent? Because everybody's gonna wanna put a TV screen in their bodega, in their wine store, in their restaurant. How do you, you know, deal with that? How do you put that into code? So if you're gonna make a resolution, making a recommendation to permit this, I think you've got to address that at the same time. You can't just say yes to this and then forget about that, you know, everybody else is gonna come in and say they've got their TV screen. I mean, how do you, I mean, that's why it's the code.
No, thank you, Russ. I think that's exactly what we're discussing as far as, you know, the, the specifics of the recommendation so that it isn't a recommendation of the city council to um, allow EMCs in the downtown district, but um, to update the code so it's specific very to the um, the historical character, so it isn't just every, um, you know, chop, bodega, um, that it's, it's only allowed in a historical context. Um, so, um.
You might, I mean, just to be helpful.
Go ahead.
Could you, you might make your recommendation first or, and try to ask the council to um, perhaps allow an EM, a suitable EMC uh, where it replaces a historic element that um, previously served the same purpose.
Yes.
But can no longer, is no longer feasible. I don't know if that meets what you want or not.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. It's to replace the illum- well, it's illumination as well as EMCs that, that replace um, or otherwise mimic.
Historic.
Historical.
Element.
Element on a building. Um, so to that point, I'd like to make a motion that we as a board make that recommendation to city council to um, amend the zoning code with that language we just worked out. That will be out on recording. Which I will go back and watch and write down. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Evie. So we have a, a motion by Lindsay, a second by Evie. Um, roll call vote, Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
I have a question on what we're voting on. We're voting on the variance or we?
The recommendation to, to the city council to amend code.
Yes.
Thank you, Zach. Steve?
Yes.
Uh, Lindsay, yes.
Tamara? Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so we're gonna make that recommendation to city council. I will write it up and send it to Angie to get over to city council. Um, with that, any questions, comments, um, any further discussion related to these variances? Are we ready to take an action? Ready to take an action?
I'm ready to take an action.
Okay. Um, I am gonna bite the bullet on this one for us. I am gonna make a motion that, um, we approve the use variance to allow EMCs in the form of a wall digital display panels and the illumination of the American sign on this building. Um, given that this is a use variance, making sure that we are hitting all of the criteria. Um, the applicant has provided that the property is unable to provide a reasonable return unless this uh, variance is approved because it would not reflect the historic building frontage and character um, and therefore potentially couldn't even be funded. Um, the hardship is specifically related to this property. It is incredibly u- unique to this property or properties like it, and that is an historic American theater. Um, it does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood because there are only two historical theaters in downtown Troy. Um, and uh, requesting this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because again, it is very much in keeping and reflecting of the historic character of the neighborhood. And it is a, not a self-created hardship because this was previously in place, taken down and a requirement to be installed in order to um, meet shippo requirements. Do I have a second?
A second.
Zach, thank you. So a motion by Lindsay, a second by Zach, roll call vote, Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes. Tamara?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Five, zero. Thank you, Rick. Keep on me with that as I get used to our new rule call. Um. Okay. Um, I am going to second variance, area variance, we hitting that? I'm gonna, that's sorry, the third one with the, the variance for the right-of-way encroachment. Just variance following the area criteria, both area variances.
Yeah.
I'm taking these one at a time.
You have to take, yeah. You need to take one at a time so we wouldn't.
Oh, they just passed the user.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just taking, I, I'm gonna draw it out, it's fine. Do both same time or one after another. Um, I am gonna make a motion on the area variance permitting two EMCs. Um, one, only one is allowed for lots, so it is an area variance of one additional EMC. Um, in that uh, we approve the variance requested. Um, it's not going to cha- uh, create an undesirable change in the neighborhood, again, reflecting the historical character. It is one additional EMC bordering the two entryways, again, as the historic, um, reflecting the historical use of the building. Um, the benefit cannot be sought um, or cannot be achieved by any other feasible method other than illumination, whether it be an EMC or a poster that it, poster frame that is backlit. So we might as well go with the EMC that is, um, the illumination as well as approved by shippo, not a substantial variance. It's an increase of one EMC, one, one is allowed on one lot. Um, and uh, does not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood or the conditions, given that these are low light and relatively static. Do I have a second?
I would second that motion.
Thank you, Steve. Motion by Lindsay, second by Steve. Roll call vote, Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes. So we are five, zero, motion passes. Alright, I'm just gonna do that from now on, splitting me in the middle, just throwing me off, alright? Um, okay, uh, last motion, I am gonna make a motion, um, that we approve the variance for the right-of-way encroachment clearance, a variance of seven feet nine inches. Um, that would be leaving the um, overhang, uh, eight feet three inches above the sidewalk. Um, this is again replacing in kind and historical element to the building. Um, so it is not an undesirable change on the character of the neighborhood. Um, it cannot be constructed in another method, um, given that it's using the existing steel and attachment. It cannot be constructed in another method, given that it's using the existing steel and attachment structure that's already in place. Is not a substantial request. It does not extend beyond the face of the curb and will not encroach any vehicle travel. And does not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, given again, it's an historical element that's being replaced. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tamara. Steven Ramramon today. Motion by Lindsay, second by Tamara. Roll call vote, Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes. Motion passes, five zero, all in favor. Alright. I need to take deep breath after. I've got my, my soda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one clarification?
Yeah, Evie.
Do I need to clarify or reiterate the motion with regards to the unlisted character of that project?
Say that again?
Seeker.
Didn't we do seeker last time?
We did seeker, but it went from
Type two.
Type two, and then to unlisted. I just wanted to make sure that we're closed all the loops.
Didn't we do a negative declaration?
I thought we did last time.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it was also listed as unlisted.
Yeah, because of a use variance.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure.
So unlisted can have an effect on the environment, so.
Yes.
So you need to do a declaration with respect to unlisted.
I thought we handled that last.
I thought we did too. I thought, I thought we actually discussed it before.
Double check because it was, you know, referred to.
It was thirty long days ago, I'm not totally certain.
Angie, can you double check the record on that one and, and our meeting minutes?
I'll let him wait.
Well, no, 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 I'm thinking that, you know, if we, if we need to handle that or at a next meeting, just to cross that off. We can do that.
Okay, yeah, I will.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that every dot is.
Because the last time it was on, they did, were not.
I think that, we had it as last time. The only reason we tabled it was the other variances, the two EMCs and the encroachment.
Okay, okay. Because the status had changed and I wanted to make sure that everything was.
I will make sure I check and let you guys know.
Yeah. Okay, we are on to new business on our agenda this evening. PLZVA 2025-009, this is 560 Congress Street. The, is to convert a former church into nine market rate apartments. The variance requested is a side setback for a variance of nine feet six inches. You are further away from the side setback line than our code dictates.
Correct.
We're all ears.
Danny Sanders, Harris Sanders Architects, representing 560 Congress Street. The proposed project is for a nine-unit apartment conversion from the existing church in terms of two additions that we are doing to the building. They're for life safety requirements to create enclosed stairwells adjacent to the existing, attached to existing building and in any respect.
Could you, could you try to speak in the?
Thanks.
I'm sorry. Thank you. The two additions to the building are for enclosed stairwells to provide safe egress from all levels of the church, and the project itself is a interior renovation other than the two staircase additions. One of those staircase additions is part of the variance hearing tonight, but again, we're making it smaller than to the side yard setback, so it's actually greater of a setback from the side yard than code allows.
I'm gonna ask this, this silly question. What would it mean if we weren't to grant this variance?
We would be making a larger stairwell than required, than necessary. And it would be more obtrusive of an addition to a historic building. We're trying to make this as subtle as possible, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, thank you.
So why, like, is this still gonna be like a safety, like people to be able to get in and out, like it's gonna be wide enough? Like, the code is probably set there for safety reasons to be able to get a group of people out. And if you're gonna make that smaller, wouldn't it make it harder for people to get out?
No, the stairwell addition that we're doing is a standard four-foot width staircase for double wide. So it's approximately eight feet, and that's fine for staircase egress. And that's all we need to do, so that's all we're proposing. I'm not sure what the question is, other than that, the stairwell or the egress corridors are all code compliant.
You said you're making the stairwell smaller.
Smaller than the code.
If we don't grant the variance, they can make the stairwell excessively wide and not need a variance from us, was all I was pointing out.
Section addition right here is eight point four.
Oh, sorry, is that, does that mic get detached, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just again, so we have your comment on the.
Sorry. Okay, so the eight point four addition by nineteen point two four addition is a stairwell addition, and that's all it needs to be. If we make it wider, it's wasteful for a staircase to be any wider than necessary.
Steve?
Point to the front of the church and show me where Congress Street runs.
Right here.
There we go. Now.
So this.
Back and show me what you're proposing.
The two stairwell additions, one is behind the rebuilt tower.
So that would be by the parking lot.
Correct.
Got it.
And the second one is, is, is far back from Congress is feasible within the existing footprint, which continues down a little bit further, and then the cliff down.
So if I stand on Congress Street and I look at the front of the building, I don't really see that stairwell because it's behind the tower.
Correct, this one.
Yes.
And then the other one is far, considerably far back.
I got it.
Is that stairwell gonna be for regular access to, like, daily access to the apartments? Or is this emergency kinda egress?
It's emergency egress to the apartments, the main entrances are still being reused at the front for specifically two apartments, so they don't go through the rest of the building, they directly enter into their apartment. And then the other remaining seven apartments are accessed mainly from adjacent to the stairwell, but not within the stairwell addition over here. But this is never going to be used as an entrance, no.
I already looked at it, okay. I'm, I'm very familiar with this building, so I'm good. Anyone else want Angie to pull it to Google Street View?
No.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I do. On the staff report, it indicates that the applicant has not yet submitted authorization from the owner.
They did.
We just did.
That's resolved.
That's resolved now. Sorry, but yeah, they did.
Thank you. And what's the sta, I'm sorry, may I ask another?
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the status also in the staff report? It says the applicant's proposal is currently undergoing site plan review. What is the status of that?
We're hoping to be on the April agenda for the planning board now. We couldn't make the march because we didn't have the signature and the documents authorization.
They would need our variance or conditional approval on our variance anyway.
Correct.
Question.
Steve?
The parking lot is part of the building, correct?
Correct.
How many cars does that lot take?
I believe thirteen, I think was the.
There's, there's no, there's no change to the existing parking lot.
So currently, this parking lot is being maintained.
As is.
As is. The entry point maintained as is.
Is, is the parking lot all within the footprint of the property that's, or is it just overlap?
It's overlapping a section of, there's separate parcels.
But they're still all owned by the developer?
Correct.
By the owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Tamara?
So, I mean, this isn't. This isn't part of what we're here for, but if I'm coming down Congress, I can't actually get into that parking lot. So is, is there gonna, well, so when you're coming, I mean, just with the flow of traffic, you have to kinda go. It's gonna shut down people who are coming down the other way. Has, has that, anybody thought about that? It's just, it's gonna be hard for traffic.
I think that's a planning issue, but it's a pre-existing condition. So if we have to change the, you know, design of the entry point into the parking lot, we'll address that. It's tricky because it's on a curve, I mean.
Yeah, I know, I live, I live very close to there. Yeah, I know that curve well.
I, yeah, I, right turn in, I think is, is easy, even right turn out, and even left out might be a little bit tricky, but
Correct.
The left turn in, I think when you're, you've just passed the intersection at that point, but outside of our, but Angie, if you can let planning board know that we had the, the question slash comment.
So I, I think it was mentioned at the last, when we, before the planning board in, in January?
No, this is the first.
No, before the planning board.
We were not.
You have not been there at all?
I haven't.
I'm sorry, it was doing, it was an internal meeting, okay.
Okay. Not just us. Angie, I can email you too. Steve?
One question. It doesn't really have anything to do with your presentation to the board. Whatever happened to the brewing company that bought that building?
I have no idea. We were brought in. Yeah, nobody.
So, so they are currently in receivership, and the authorization that we have is from the receiver who, whose authority was expanded by the court to cover this property.
Thank you. That answers the question.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Alright, no more questions? Okay, do we have anyone here that would like to make a comment to the board? Name, address, question?
My name is Laura Ryder. I'm, I live on the east side, so I know the property. I just have a question on the property on the west side. Isn't there an easement there to access?
Just to be clear, just for everyone's sake, any questions need to be directed to us. And we will choose if we're gonna direct them to the applicant.
Understood.
Just so everyone's aware of process and I have that on the record.
Right, so my, I thought just as a, as a neighbor passing by, you know, maybe it's just like, you know, neighborhood lore that there's an easement in that driveway to access some kind of equipment at the dam, at the gorge. And so just wondering if the stairwell that's proposed there would in any way affect the easement? Maybe there isn't an easement, I don't know, just a question, so that's my, my question.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. Yeah, I'm all for infrastructure management.
Diagram, the stairway would be right behind the clock tower.
No, the other side.
Not on the other side.
The smaller one.
Oh, okay.
It's the fire escape, basically.
Yep, don't know, can't answer that part, but I know that you have a dam there.
I mean, it seems that they should be able to access through the parking lot if there's an easement.
Oh, well, if there's an easement, that, this could be an encroachment on the easement. I, I don't know, I haven't seen the, the the conveyance documents.
Hold on, I'm gonna go to comments online, and then we'll, we'll get into it. Anyone from the public want to make a comment to the board? We did receive one written public comment. Did everyone see that come through? And the, I think that's related to the comments in the chat. Angie, can you expand that just so I can read those? From Frank, who's here, comments sent via email about 560 Congress, cars park on that side of the church, which I assume is the driveway side we were just talking about. Okay.
So.
Any additional comments, either Frank or anyone else's online? No, okay. Alright, Rick, you had a question or comment?
Well, I wonder if the applicant or applicant's representative knows whether there is an easement on that driveway that they proposed to build on.
We will, I'm not sure if there is an easement. I, I also heard that there might be an easement in that area. So we'll check into that prior to planning board, I guess.
Well, I, I think it makes a difference for I think it makes a difference for zoning in the sense that we require an applicant to have authority to act with respect to the property. And I know they have authority from the receiver, however, if there is a, an unimpaired easement running down that driveway, I think they would have to get authority from the, I mean, I'm speaking with the cuff here, but I think they might have to get authority from the easement holder.
No, like, to some extent, it argues even more in favor of providing the easement because without it, or the variance, because without it, it would be fully impinging upon any potential easement.
The five, the five-foot side yard would be fully impending.
Yeah, yeah, so basically that driveway is the side yard and we'd be restricting. But what, what is your width remaining? Angie, do you mind pulling up the site?
Fourteen point five feet.
From the.
From the property line.
I have a question.
Yes, Angie?
I remember, I think Erica said they sent you a staff report about providing a survey. Did you?
We're working, we need to engage a civil engineer at this point.
Because the survey would, would.
Help answer that question.
This is the best we could work with, given the current owner's documents. This is what we work with.
The fourteen and a half feet that are remaining is likely sufficient for any sort of even large vehicle to pass. But can we grant a variance contingent upon it being allowed or outside of the easement area, or do we need to wait to determine if there is in fact an easement?
I tend, I tend to be cautious about these things and I, I really you know, we, we try to get permission before we, before we grant a, a variance. We want to know that the owners of the property or the people who have a real interest in the real property don't object to the, to the variance. That's, that was the purpose of getting the receiver's authorization. However, I don't know what kind of equipment you use for dam maintenance.
Guess it depends on what kind of maintenance.
Years ago, I saw a very large excavator in the creek bed. And so I, I would be hesitant to, I, I really don't think the board should grant the variance until the ownership issues are resolved, but I mean, you're free to act. Pardon? Well, the easement is, is an ownership, is, is an interest in land. It's a real property interest.
I think we should postpone this until next month before we get the clarification in writing from the owner and or the deed regarding easement, as well as the survey.
The survey would most likely clarify because the surveyor would do the title research.
However, I just think it's pretty true.
Yeah, I, I agree. So I am gonna make a motion that we table this application until a survey is complete, which would identify whether there is an easement. If there is an easement, I'd like to also add, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we table it until there is a, a survey, and I'm gonna follow up with one comment. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Thank you. Motion made by Lindsay, second by Steve. Roll call vote, Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, motion to table carries five zero. If the surveyor does identify an easement, if you can get a copy of that specific easement as far as any conditions of it being clear width, et cetera, for access to the dam. for access to the dam, that would be something we'd also want to look at to make sure we're maintaining all the criteria.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean. I, this is the first I've heard of this.
Well, that's why we ask for surveys. Surveys are good. They're paying the bus sometimes, but they're good. Okay. Um, moving on, uh, other new business PLZBA 2025 0010. This is 188 Seventh Avenue, an area variance on proposing the construction of a two and a half story home and detached ADU. Um, the variance is for the minimum lot width, proposing thirty three feet. Forty feet is required with a relief, relief of seven foot, seven feet requested. The variance is a seven foot to the minimum lot requirement. This, to clarify, there was a typo on the original agenda that had this listed as fifty feet being required as minimum lot width. And it's actually only forty feet. So there's a variance of seven feet that is, um, being requested. Do we have the applicant?
Why I'm really here. My name is Laura Ryder. I'm an architect at TAP, representing my client, Eric Colado, who owns the property. He's unable to be here tonight. So yeah, it's, I think it's fairly straightforward. It's an existing lot that's thirty three feet wide. Obviously, it was in place before the new zoning ordinance required a forty foot lot. There used to be a two family house on it. It burned down in 2018. He would like to put a one family house back on it. And it's a mixed block of one and two families. So it would be, you know, completely appropriate and allowed use as well. So it was really the only issue is the fact that it's an existing non-conforming lot that he would like to build on.
Uh, any questions from the board?
No.
No.
Um, right? Yeah, I, I took a look at the, the area list review. Um, I agree, it's pretty standard to, for the, the neighborhood to have this. This lot with, there's two existing structures on either side, correct?
Yep.
Where's the lot?
I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Zach, go ahead.
Is this for like him to live in or is he looking for an apartment?
He says it's for himself and his wife.
Where is the lot? Am I at the right place?
It's, it's the picket fence, the stockade fence. Yeah, that's the, that's the vacant lot right there.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Uh, any comments from members of the public in the room regarding this project? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Finn. I live at 565 Eighth Ave. And I would just like to recommend this project be approved. It's the type of construction that fits the neighborhood. And I don't see any reason why this type of construction wouldn't be allowed. It's a vacant lot that was, the house was burnt down. It's going to invest to make it happen. So I think you should approve.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Okay. Anyone online that wishes to make a comment regarding this project? Go once, go twice. Okay. Um, any questions or discussions from the board?
None.
None.
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, seeker.
Yes.
Kind of like have like.
One motion. Madam Chair, in regard to PLZBA 2025-0010, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be a seeker type two action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Right, type two. Isn't this just a seeker statement?
Right, this just, if you find it's, if you find it's a type two, then you don't have to make it.
Right. So we're just agreeing it's type two. We don't have to take action. Yeah, I second that motion. All right, so motion made by Evie, seconded by Lindsay. Roll call vote. Evie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve, sorry.
Yes.
Lindsay, yes, five zero, uh, motion carries. There is no seeker action as type two. Um, do we have a motion on the variance? Anyone else gonna take this?
Chairperson, you got all the words. Mine would be.
Uh, area variances not need to meet all of the criteria. A use variance does.
So where do I start? From the beginning?
From the beginning and any that you think apply and why? Make a motion that you be to approve the variance first.
I make a motion that we approve the variance. Do we read the number? This is the first time I've done this.
The variance, yes.
So you can just read the, if you're approving, you read the green boxes.
We're gonna get practice, so I'm not only the one doing this. Sorry.
I moved that the board, okay. I moved that, I moved that the board approve the variance.
Yes.
Based on the following tax, the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or to be determined to determine detriment, excuse me, to nearby properties if it is granted.
Because?
Because it fits in with the neighborhood?
It will conform.
It will conform to the neighborhood?
That's perfect.
All right. And the benefit, the benefits sought by the applicant may not be achieved by some feasible method other than the proposed variance because they wouldn't allow them to build on it.
Yes.
Unless approved.
And the lot is preexisting.
And the lot is preexisting. The requested variance is not sustainably because.
It's not substantial.
Substantial because there's nothing on there now and it's the size of a lot. Enough.
You don't have digital.
Yeah, and you don't have digital. Um, I will second that with clarification that this is providing a variant, a relief of seven feet for the minimum lot width. Motion by Zach, seconded by Lindsay. Roll call vote. Evie?
Yes, with a clarification.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes, five zero. You have your area variance. Uh, yeah, I've got it. Uh, I probably have another copy. Um, it just means someone else is gonna be doing the next one if we do that tonight.
I'll pass it. Do you need, do you need one of these? Yeah, if you have one.
We have several copies of this.
I do.
Well, you've got, all right, you're all set. Okay. Um, moving on, uh, last new business item, PLZBA 2025 0011. This is 604 Seventh Avenue, um, and area variance, unlisted seeker action. This is for, um, proposing the construction of twelve, oh, sorry. Um, I should have just handed that. Um, project is proposing the construction of twelve townhouses built in blocks of four. This is requiring several variances. I'm gonna go through the generic variances, not necessarily the specific lots. Um, but it is a variance of the lot width. Um, a relief of seventeen to ten feet, depending on the lot. But for each of the lots, um, in this zone, forty foot lot width is required. Um, a relief on several of the lots for an allowed building frontage of a hundred percent or only eighty percent is required in this zone. Um, the next variance is the front parking setback. Um, a relief of zero feet is requested. So parking can be along the property, front property line, whereas our zoning requires it to be thirty feet back from the front property line. And then a required side setback for parking of five feet. For all twelve lots. All right, I'm gonna let you go through these and explain them.
Okay, thank you to the board. Yeah.
I give you access though.
Yeah, I'm in. I'll share. I have a quick presentation, give you some background. I'll walk through the variance request and then happy to answer any questions. Okay. Uh, my name is Joe Pernicero. I'm here on behalf of Redburn Development, which is a company behind the LLC doing the project. We went before the Planning Board in January for the subdivision. That's really the only thing they have to approve there. It's just a subdivision. But because of, as was mentioned, our lot widths, um, and then also the future townhouses we plan to develop. And we're here seeking some area variances. So there's the project map. Um, that is the entire parcel as it exists right now before the subdivision. It is the old Catholic gym and football field. Our company is completing redevelopment of the old school and gym into apartments. That's just about done. People are living there. But I think it went really well. And we're really proud of it, especially as an alumni. So this project, though, is a subdivision of the front of the football field into twelve lots for townhouses. These will be single family townhomes, new construction. So as you can see there, uh, that the building on the top of that map is the existing gym and a new parking lot that we built for the apartments inside the gym. And then all that kind of along the back stays with that parcel. So that is that parcel. Most of the football field will also remain just one big parcel with frontage on 115th. And then you see the twelve new lots there along Seventh Ave where the townhomes will be built. Couple photos for you just to orient yourselves. Left foot on the left is looking at the field, standing on the corner of Seventh, maybe 116th. And this is at the other end, football field, looking back towards the gym. So the first set of variances is for lot width. Um, as you mentioned, forty feet is required here. You know, the design that we were able to come, come up with that, you know, financially works for, you know, to build housing in this area requires a little bit's, you know, error or lot widths. Um, this is normal in this part of Lantingberg. You know, if you, if you look across the blocks surrounding this, there are many lots around twenty five foot width. You know, forty feet is a, is not outrageous in this area. As you can see, the, the ones in the middle are a bit narrower and the end caps in that bottom right photo shows you are the thirty foot ones. Next set of variances is for building frontage where eighty percent is allowed and we are requesting a hundred percent. This is for the townhouses in the middle of the blocks of four. Obviously, they will take up the entire width of that parcel. As you see in the bottom right photo, the two middle townhomes obviously cover the entire width of the parcel. Again, just the nature of townhouse development. You know, this is also, uh, you know, it's, it's seen in this part of the neighborhood as well. I believe a couple of photos there. You know, historically, it's been done. Um, there is precedent for it, you know, in the neighborhood. I know, uh, you know, the new code has this written this way, but it is seen elsewhere. These photos are taken just a couple of blocks away, um, around the corner. That's on third, well, it's the same, I believe, same district, same zoning use. That, that's the point, but yeah.
Please refrain from comments. You'll have an opportunity to provide us your comments, but thank you.
And then the last set of variances is for the parking area. This is a bit unique. Um, when we met with the neighborhood, the overall biggest concern was parking. Um, so we are proposing driveways for these in the front of them. You know, again, there is precedent for this in the neighborhood. It's, it's unusual, but there is some homes that have this. So as you can see there in the bottom right, you'll still have a little bit of a front yard, but the driveway will come sort of right up against the lot line and then lead up right to the house. Again, just a couple of photos from elsewhere in Lantingberg. It's the same, same use here. You know, it can be found. That is sort of the background of it. Happy to answer any questions you might have and go back to any part of the thing. I know it's a lot. Yes, sir. Sorry.
This is the Seventh Avenue side of the football field.
That's correct. Yep, right up against Seventh Ave.
Behind the proposed townhouses?
Yes.
What do we got? Just a big lawn?
A big lawn. Going all the way back until you, you get to a hill there where they used to have a practice field and then you get some woods. You know, before you get to, uh, the name of the company. Yeah, well, yeah, the company just bought that, the plug PE. They, they're probably, their property goes all the way back there.
Why not put a driveway that allows parking behind the townhouses on the backside? Where you've got that big, big field.
So the only reason, and we did think about that, you're saying coming off of 115th almost as an alleyway behind?
Well, correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
The only reason we, we didn't do that is because I think it would be a dead end alley. You know, I, I guess we could consider that. I, I think that is a valid solution here.
I'm thinking of the aesthetics, the character, the neighborhood, having the cars behind the units as opposed to in front of the units. And then you need no setback from Seventh Avenue for the park?
Uh, yeah, I think that we can consider that. And I think that is a.
Personal thought.
Yeah.
I think it would enhance your project immensely to do it that way, but that's my own thinking.
I had the same comment. Um, you know, our code is very explicit and the, the reasoning and, and the encouragement of using on-street parking as opposed to driveways, especially in the front. Um, you know, being placed in front of the building, I, you know, I was concerned that it was only driveways. You weren't showing any like walkways up to a front door or anything like that within your front lawns. And that would just be excessive pavement space within your front lawns of, you know, already proposed narrow lots. Um, so I, I would not be in favor of this parking. Um, uh, variance that you're requesting. Um, I don't particularly take issue with the, um, the size of the lots. I think that's fairly common. Um, but the frontage, um, you know, that maximum frontage, the, you've provided some examples of other lots within the neighborhood that have party walls or, you know, are, are larger lots, larger buildings, but the vast majority of houses in that neighborhood appeared to be single standing. So this would be a day, big deviation. So can you kind of explain like what that would impact in your project? If you, you know, basically split this up, so it was only two units and you could still provide that lot coverage.
On either side.
As opposed to four sandwiched together.
Yeah, um, you know, I would have to go back and look at what that does financially. Again, we're, we're trying to build housing here. And we kind of had to hit a certain number in order for it to work financially. So, you know, that would certainly, I think, reduce the number of units probably by a couple. Just because, you know, you, you wouldn't be able to get the narrower ones there in the middle. You just have the end caps. So I have not looked at that analysis to see what would happen.
But you've got, I'm sorry.
Steve, you've got to clarify.
Plenty of room behind.
Yep. Yep. So
Put units behind the existing proposed site. Plus parking.
Which we don't want to do because when we originally met with the neighborhood, we actually had thirty-eight units going all the way back up the football field and then we got some, some really big pushback on that. So we've dialed it back quite a bit and, you know, twelve was kind of the number we settled on that it still worked. We were able to, you know, build housing here and
I'm not saying you can't use twelve.
You're saying, but, but right, but I, I still want to have frontage along Seventh Ave. Otherwise, I'm, I'm kind of building a new street there on the new football field, which, you know, that's
You've got to increase the number of units in order to build, make building the new
I mean, the, the cost of building the infrastructure for a new city street would, would, you know, would not be feasible here. I'm, I'm only doing this because I'm able to reuse, you know, the existing city street.
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
You can ask all the questions. You can tell me no.
Oh, I get to do that, right? The, have you had the discussion with the city of what they would require? If you were to put in that street and kind of break up the development on both sides? Because I assume it would be an extension of the alley, not necessarily a full public right of way. And you, I assume, own the property to the north. Would you be able to kind of connect through that parking lot, so to speak, to provide a continuous as opposed to like a dead end alley? Have you had those conversations?
When we originally met with city staff, I believe we were still proposing the large number of units. And extending eighth Ave isn't necessarily possible just because of the grading as you go. May I?
Won't argue with you there. Can't extend eighth Ave, but you could extend the alley.
You, you could theoretically extend the alley. I, we did not get to the point of discussion of whether the city would find that as an acceptable solution. You know, and then comfortable design of housing with only frontage off the alley. Because there would be
It wouldn't necessarily just be frontage off the alley, but I think to Steve's point, as far as being able to put the parking behind
So that, yes, the, the parking in the back with, whether it's an alley continuing in the alley or I find a way to squeeze it where it's just one curb cut off of Seventh Ave and kind of branching into the back. I think that we can certainly consider and address separately. So, you know, I almost want to like table the parking variances until we're able to consider that and then just address the lot width in the frontage here.
Oh, wait, hold on. I want to take in Rick, Zach. I won't forget about you. I saw on your site plan that you looked, that it was phase one. Is that a leftover remnants from like this overall master plan? And you're not actually proposing anything further at this point?
That's probably a leftover because again, the pushback we got was, yeah. And, and also, you know, we would have to come back and do a whole separate meeting and I guarantee there'd be a lot more people here. And yeah, right now we have no plans to do anything more on that lot. Again, the, the cost of the infrastructure extending the city street, so without a partnership from the city, you know, we don't have any plans for that.
Okay, Rick.
Somewhere in your paperwork, prior to this, I think I saw fourteen units as opposed to twelve?
Fourteen lots.
Fourteen lots.
And that's only because there'll be one lot for the existing gym and then one lot for the rest of the field. That's the other two.
Oh, okay. All right. Secondly, are there, I think you spoke of three blocks of four?
Yep.
Is there a gangway between each block in your, in your design?
Uh, not right now. So there you can see on the left, it would just be a, a green patch between the three, the blocks of housing.
And the units are currently a different size, correct? I mean, the, the middle units are narrower than the end units.
That's correct.
If they were all the same size as the middle units, would there be room for gangways between each block of four to break it up?
Potentially, I think that's how in my head quickly when we discuss the parking. I, my, I would make the end units smaller in order to get back there for parking in the rear. I, I would put a gangway in between the
Well, I meant even if you had the entrance on one hundred and
Fifteenth.
Hundred and fifteenth street for the, for the parking. I mean, part, part of the objection, I think, is that this is a single family, mainly a single family area.
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, I, I don't know how these could, I, I guess I'm suggesting that it sounds like they could be, there might be room to break them up if they were small.
It's to my, yeah, one of my earlier questions related to the variance of, you know, if they were to break it up into, to two. So it was only one, two units together with party walls opposed to four units together with party walls. Then they potentially could eliminate the hundred percent front coverage variance of the
Maybe I'm misunderstanding. I thought actually all twelve units will be connected.
No.
Also, there are gangways between the blocks of four?
Uh, yeah, but it's just, it's just a grass patch. Sorry, gangway, maybe we're
No hardscape, yes.
Maybe we're confusing our interpretations.
Oh, they are.
Yes, so you've got a block of four here with, and there's a separation.
I see it there.
Another block, another block, yeah.
I can't read from there.
Sorry.
Okay, Zach, I didn't forget about you.
Can you go back to, can you go back to the other picture which shows the, the field?
That one or the other one?
No, the one with the, with the mockup of it. So if you put a road in, my question is really is if you put a road in, no?
I'm sorry.
Which one?
There's a map.
The map.
That one.
That one. So if you put a road or an alleyway to get to the back of the apartments, there's a lot of space between, there will be between the alleyway and the back of the backside of the property, right?
You're saying if we put a, a road back here behind the new townhomes?
Yeah, what's, what's all that to the right?
Empty vacant land.
That you own.
Yes, and that's why I said I think
Townhouse, so there would be an alley and then empty field.
Yeah.
And then is it your idea if you did that, that the homeowner would, or the owner would maintain that past the alleyway or is that?
So I think that's why I kind of wanted to table that part of it because I don't, I don't know.
So just my thought
We would have to talk
I bought a townhouse there and then there was an alleyway behind. And then I had all this grass. I don't know if all my neighbors would, will mow back there.
Oh, oh, no, we will retain ownership of the, whatever the size of this final lot is. Yes, and we'll maintain it along with the rest of this existing gym and field. Yeah, just like we've been doing. We, we've owned the, the property for a year and a half now.
I know, I mean, it's, it's my neighborhood. I walk by it all the time. So it's, I just didn't want it to become a overgrown field.
Yeah.
That's, that's my concern because just if you have an alleyway, that's like a natural stop for somebody to not
Yeah, now to your point, though, maintenance of the alleyway itself.
Who's responsible for it?
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if that becomes a city alleyway, if, if, if we, if we retain ownership of it and then there's some sort, I don't know. I, that, that's why I kind of want to table that part of it and just focus on the lot width and lot frontage.
Um, based on the, I mean, you've relayed that you got put feedback, uh, pushback from the neighborhood as far as a much more dense development.
Yeah, and, and you know, maybe if this goes well, you know, maybe down the road and, you know, however many years, we do try and do more. But, you know, right now it's, it's just these.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate that you've reduced it, but it's also sandwiched it. So it still generally seems dense. So to kind of set the precedent for all these variances and approval, you, you would potentially be able to just mimic that over and over again. So I'm going to at least ask the question of, have you considered or would you potentially consider for that kind of leftover field piece? Like a conservation easement and kind of leaving that as open space? Because we don't have a kind of like green space requirement and part of a larger, it would be a subdivision.
You're saying like a forever green?
Yeah, like, yeah. Is that something you'd be willing to consider? I'm not
No, I, I would have to talk to the rest of the people at the company. I can't make that decision on my own.
Tamara. You could make it a community garden also.
Dog park.
Dog park. But I'm just, I mean, that's not what we're here for, but that, that would probably be accepted in the community.
Yeah.
I was, I was saying.
Um, I'm just again trying to, the, the density of the development compared to the rest of the neighborhood, thinking about that offset. I think I'm, I'm concerned with, yeah, again, kind of the density compared to the rest of the, the neighborhood. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Do you want to table the whole thing until he comes back?
I want to take public comment before we even talk about that. Anything else for us right this second?
Uh, no, I will, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that come up after.
Awesome. Um, anyone here in the room that would like to make a comment regarding the project, come on up.
Once again, my name is Tim Finn. I live at five sixty-five Eighth Avenue, which is on the corner of Honor Fifteenth, directly across from the, the south side of the field. I submitted an email. I'm assuming that it was read by some of you, if not all. Again, just to reiterate some points. It isn't the character of the neighborhood. There, there aren't any buildings. There, there may be one, you know, one block in Lantingberg that has four attached like that. Across the street from there, that whole side is only, there's only six homes, single family homes. One of the other topics was as far as the, the parking and whatnot. I looked at the, unless something changed, I looked at the original planning approvals and in their application, they stated no curb cuts. Well, how do you do no curb cuts with driveways? Um, like I said, I don't know if something else changed in the plan. Very few, like you said, homes in the area have driveways. There's one here, one there with the cars out in front. Most of it's on-street parking or garages in the alley. One of the other things that came up previously when they got approval for the apartments was that, oh, the field's going to remain green space. They get that project done. Now they proposing this. And I'm assuming that even though they say they reduce the number that they're planning on building, phase two will be next. And if you set precedence by allowing this type of construction in the area, like you said, they're just going to mimic that on the backside, you know, he's, that's why he won't commit to that. And also to say that this is the only way to make a profit is wrong. Gentlemen, before him, building a single family home on a single lot, minor variance. There's two, two proposals in the council tomorrow night for, for, for closed lots, single lots. Developer wants to build single family homes. He's not going to do it without making a profit. So to say they can't make a profit developing it in a more, less dense way is simply not true. And once again, parking would be an issue. So I would suspect that they won't commit to a conservation area. And once again, like it, the frontage of it would just not be aesthetically nice. So like I said, I, I would not want you to set precedence by approving something like this and have it be mimicked, which I, I believe is our intentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments from folks here in the room? Anyone online that would like to make a comment regarding this project? Yeah, okay. Um, thank you for coming back up. Um, one other question that I thought of. Is, is the intention to rent these or
Or sell.
Sell, hence the subdivision individual lots, okay. Um, any other questions from board? I am gonna propose tabling this so you can address some of our comments and come back to us. But before I actually make that motion and dismiss you, I'm going to give the opportunity for the board to discuss and so that you have feedback from us and mitigate things, you know, above and beyond what we've already commented or questioned. Um, I am particularly concerned about the fronting in the park, uh, uh, or sorry, the parking in the front. I feel like that's in complete opposition to our code as far as the reasoning. Um, I, I personally don't have an objection to not providing parking, relying into on-street parking. But if that's feedback you heard or you feel like that's important for resale, then I encourage you to look at option, other options to provide parking. I don't know if the, that's just me or the rest of the board is. I think Steve is at least one other that's in agreement with that.
Yeah, I'm concerned on a personal level only. If you have the football field behind the structures, you've got plenty of room to put in a service road, a driveway and dedicated parking. So parking on Seventh Avenue is moot. It's a non-issue. And that's just a personal note that I would recommend for you to take back for whatever it may be worth.
Appreciate it. I think it's a valid one. That's a
Yes, Evie.
With regards to a comment or a request for, you know, the tabling motion that we get to help evaluating future variants, clarified variance request. That we get some sort of cost benefit analysis of the different options. So it will help us. We really don't have, you know, it's like, we can't, we can't make profit on this. We, because it's some, something that shows that in, in some estimated fashion.
To your point, given that this is a large lot and you're proposing residential development or, you know, single family homes. That can be accomplished without any variances from us. So I think we need more justification other than it fits or doesn't fit within the character of the neighborhood of why those variances are required. You know, I, the lot lies, lot line size is a good example. That's pretty common to have lot line sizes underneath forty feet within the zone. But again, it's asking for us for a variance when you're already doing a subdivision. You know, like the, the previous applicant before us, that was an existing lot that literally couldn't be expanded. So, um, yeah, I think we definitely need the, you know, the justification and kind of the difference because something could be built here without any variances from us. Tamara.
What's the square footage of, I know that there's different sizes, but approximately for each townhome?
The smaller ones, I believe, are one thousand six hundred square feet. The bigger ones are closer to two thousand square feet.
Okay, so
They're all, I believe, three bed, two bath, two and a half bath?
Two-story?
Yep, two-story.
Um, is, is it not feasible to do? And I know you're saving money by having common walls. So other than that, is it feasible to do standalone houses? That will fit in that area? I mean, Troy does have houses that are close to each other.
Yep.
But, you know, with a lawnmower, two lawnmower widths in between. Is that a feasible, which would be more in keeping with the neighborhood?
I think that's something we're going to look at when we go back. We're gonna, I'm, I'm going to dive into it and see what, what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, you have the, the street frontage too, in which you, you don't necessarily just have to look at Seventh. You could look at, you know, lots along one hundred and fifteenth to kind of spread that out and still get the same number of lots without that kind of same density as well. Um, you know, that might make parking access tricky again, if you determine you need that off-street parking. Um, but another thing to kind of look at. Any other, any other questions or comments for him? Any questions or
Uh, no, I, I think
Have we given you enough direction?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of great feedback, especially the comment on the parking, I think is, is a really valid point that we're going to look at. And I will probably be back.
Okay, all right. Um, before that, I am going to make a motion that we table this application for this evening and wait for the applicant to come back with a revised application for our comments. Any seconds?
I would second.
All right, motion to adjourn, or to table made by Lindsay, second by Steve. Roll call, Evie.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes, five zero, your application.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, with that, I am going to make a motion that we adjourn our meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn made by Lindsay, second by Zach, and I'm going to skip the roll call. All in favor? Aye.
I want to post.
Five zero, we are adjourned.